They felt unsafe. They were shaking, crying, and asking, you know, "Why can't I go back to school? I'm petrified." I, please think about those students. There's going to be a tragedy someday. Please.
Thank you. Mr. Walters. Is Beverly Lawson here? Beverly Lawson, are you here? You'll be after Greg Walters. Is Beverly Larson here?
Good evening. I'm a teacher of 37 years and a city resident. In this administration's unmitigated determination to bolster test scores and graduation rates, I urge you not to be guilty of failing to realize the seriousness of allowing combative and violent students to infiltrate and harbor within our schools. Placing these students in a small in-school suspension room is ill-conceived and a catalyst for disaster. In closing, let us not forget for one moment the life of our fellow teacher, Peter Castle, and how his reprehensible fate could easily be revisited under the current disciplinary setting. Wake up before it's too late.
Thank you. Beverly Lawson? Ms. Lawson here? Michael Mullering? Is Mr. Mullering here? Paul Jonacy?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Paul Jonacy. I'm a lifelong City of Rochester resident. All of our children have attended city schools. One's a Wilson graduate, and two are currently enrolled at East High School. I'm a teacher as well as an alumnus of East High School, and I take great pride in the fact that I've returned to my alma mater to work at educating our children and supporting them in making the oftentimes difficult crossing to adulthood. There's an enormous amount of joy watching our children mature and grow to adulthood. Unfortunately, over the course of the last few months, the atmosphere at East High has deteriorated. My own children and many of my students do not feel safe at school. They express concern over the regularity of the fighting. They tell of classes that are constantly disrupted by large groups of students running down the hall, banging on doors, cursing at teachers, strewn garbage about the halls and such. They report that food is regularly thrown about the lunchroom at students and staff. They also have identified certain areas of the building as dangerous and make sure not to go there. They spend their lunchtime in places that they say are safe, such as the library or in a classroom with a teacher. And many students do spend my lunch period in the classroom with me because they feel safe there, myself and my colleagues. I have recently come to seriously question the choice to send our children there, the excellent teaching that goes on within the classrooms notwithstanding. My colleagues here that have been outside, you've seen us tonight, we're all very much committed to our students. Together, we're working toward the bright future that we all believe in. We can. Yes, we can. But before there can be education, there must be order and a sense of safety within our buildings. There must be severe consequences for those who continually show a gross disregard for order and the authority of those in charge.
Thank you. Tucker? Is Tucker Rederman here? Tucker Rederman? Kitty Palumbo? Is Kitty here? Laura Picoretto? Laura? And Ms. Picoretto will be followed by Dolores Gonzalez-Habes.
Good evening. My name is Laura Picoretto, and I'm a high school special education teacher at Bioscience and Health Careers at Franklin High School. I'm here tonight to speak on school safety on behalf of myself, Joanne Thornton, Erin Wolfe, Ed Stevens, Liz Santiago, Steve Pudiak, Erin Hittopol, Rosemary Coleman, and many other teachers who have asked to not have their names revealed. Our school, as well as other schools in the district, have been plagued with numerous disciplinary incidents that are not addressed, nor are the students held accountable. Administrators are not allowed to dispense meaningful consequences to students who violate the district's code of conduct. Students know they can't be suspended, and therefore, they can get away with the following: fighting in the halls and classrooms with no response from school safety officers despite being called as many as four times to respond to the fight; walking out of the in-school suspension room; telling a teacher to F off and then spitting at her, only to be returned to class the next day with no consequence administered; not having to attend the I'm Ready program, the out-of-school alternative program; and being able to come back to school after never even attending it or only attending for two days. A male student cornered a female teacher recently against her will and telling her sexually inappropriate things that he was going to do to her; punching the glass out of classroom doors and being back in class the next day; having violent altercations with teachers, school safety officers, and administration; and then being returned to class the next day of the very teacher where the incident occurred; treating the in-school suspension room as a phase two of a fight, meaning the students who fought are put back in the same room to serve the in-school suspension with no mediation or counseling done; getting kicked out of the I'm Ready program and being sent back to school; injuring a teacher during a fight who is still out of the building. I urge the board to act and the superintendent to tighten, not loosen, the suspension regulations of this district. It is the responsibility of those at the top of the administrative ladder to support and provide a safe learning environment for students and staff in all of our schools. The community expects nothing less.
Thank you. Dolores Gonzalez-Habes? Followed by Mary Ann Holcomb.
Good evening. As a teacher of 23 years in the district, as a parent and taxpayer, I am here to represent myself, Mr. Eric Rounds, Roberta Leibhaber, and Mr. Deb Thoman. I have in my hands the handbook for the Bioscience and Health Careers School. It reads, "Participation in behavior that is disorderly and disruptive, participation in behavior that is violent, vulgar, profane language in general, and specifically directed to adults or students, it is disrespectful." I will share with you tonight incidents that have taken place in school involving me or fellow teachers. This is not an indictment on administrative personnel. They, in such, in many instances, feel handcuffed for this particularly unofficially expressed directive of tacitly accept, tolerate, and altogether ignore such behaviors. Item number one: The F-word on any variation of "F you" or "F yourself" is a common insult hurled to teachers. Item number two: A student shouted "Shut up, you whore" to a teacher attempting to get his attention by asking him to move into the classroom. I am that teacher. A teacher's desk is invaded by a student who stole a packet of exams and was ready to be administered to class. The exams were thrown out the window. A male teacher was told to go F himself by a female student. In the afternoon, the same student was participating in an extracurricular meeting. Earlier in October, a male and female student wrestle on the floor while punching and yelling obscenities to each other. Recently, early in November, the entire student body and staff was subjected to a series of full evacuations from the building after fire alarms were pulled three times in one day, including the Montessori program. Item number eight: Two of four male students involving major fights in which a teacher was seriously injured were sent to the I'm Ready program. One served two days, the other did not serve any time. It has been said that suspending students who misbehave is racist. As a woman of Latino descent who love my profession, I submit to this board that what is racist is to expect my students, Latino, African-American, Asian, or any other, to put up with unsafe schools and chaotic schools because we want to artificially reduce the suspension rate.
Thank you. Eileen? Eileen will be followed by Susan Kieran.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Holcomb. I'm an in-school suspension teacher, Northwest at Douglas. I do believe this problem can be fixed with a few simple adjustments. Superintendent said kids who are not in school will not be learning. This is true. However, it's also true that no kids will learn if there is complete chaos in your classroom. Again, the superintendent's plan to keep more kids in the classroom so they can learn is a good idea. It needs to be adjusted somewhat so it functions correctly. I will address this in a minute. I do notice this is a very nice, orderly room. If someone were to start swearing at the board, yelling and screaming, what would happen in here? They would be removed. In our ISS rooms?
Not really.
It's okay to act that way. They don't get removed swearing at a teacher, yelling at a teacher, or even hitting them with no consequences. What kind of message are we sending to them? It's okay to act this way. You're only further exasperating the problems, showing them how to not function properly in society. Stop lowering the expectations of our students and their standards. Superintendent Bresard also speaks of the minor infractions. I don't think all of these are minor infractions. If you're talking about minor infractions, let's take them to another school district or take them into a workplace. I don't think they're considered minors, swearing at people. What happens on a job if you swear at your boss? Stop lowering these expectations. Last year, I worked as a GTI teacher, but I also started a program similar to what we're doing now. I found many times students were acting out because they didn't understand material.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Thank you.
Please give me a chance to change some of the kids in my room.
Thank you. Thank you. Eileen Hartnett? Followed by Susan Kieran.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a fourth grade teacher at School 29. I hear a lot about the violence that happens in the high school. I'm here to tell you, it starts long before high school. This year, I've had four fistfights in my classroom between students that required two men to break up the fights. It's only November. I've had a child throw a chair at me twice. I've had another child throw a book at me. I've had another little boy tell me that he keeps his bitches in line. These kids aren't getting the message when I say, "Okay, it's suspension for two days, alternative to suspension classroom for two days." I'm telling them that their behavior is acceptable in society. It's not. My job is to not only educate them in reading, writing, and arithmetic, but civility. And your job is to help me do that. And when you tell me that they only have alternative to suspension rooms and we're not holding parents accountable for their children's behavior, we're letting parents and children off the hook, and we're saying it's okay to act uncivil in our society. It's not. I'm asking you to help us do our job better by giving us the tools to help children be more civil and hold parents accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Kieran? Susan Kieran? Is Susan Kieran here? John Simmons? Is John Simmons here? Mr. Simmons will be followed by Stephen Lamortin.
Good evening. My name is John Simmons, and I teach ISS at Wilson Foundation. And while my school doesn't have the horrific stories that some of the other schools have, I have been doing the numbers, and I do not think that the program is effective or appropriate. Last year, we had the GTI program and the ITI program within our building, which allowed us to keep 36 kids long-term suspended on property. Plus, we had an ISS room. This year, we only have the ISS room, which is me, which means we only have 12 slots. To date, I have treated, in my room, and I'm only counting the ones who stay for some length of time during the day, 180 students. That is nearly a fifth of our student population. And of those, 40 or more were repeat offenders, which means that one quarter of the children coming through with that program are not getting the message. Furthermore, I feel it's also ineffective because it's somewhat of a number shell game. Some students are told, "You can go to ISS," or "If we can get your parent on the phone, you can stay at home." I don't see the great difference between keeping a kid at home or having him out-of-school suspended. Either case, the child is not on school property, not receiving any counseling or any instruction. Although it may look better percentage-wise, it hasn't really changed the situation. I also feel the program is inappropriate because about 50% of the children that I receive are special ed, learning disabled, or mostly disabled. To expect them to sit quietly for nine periods is not reasonable nor humane. I can assure you that they do not have a good time in my class, so I don't think they're coming back because they like it there. That's my finding so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Stephen Lamortin? Are you here? Followed by Celeste Shade. Is Celeste Shade here?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking the time to hear us. I haven't come to give examples of the violence that happens in schools because you've probably been hearing that all night. I'm not here to suggest that we start out-of-school suspending everybody because that's not going to be the solution. I'm not going to complain about people not doing their job because that's just going to be counterproductive. What I am here for is to ask for options, is to ask for opportunities for us to help our students more. I get to school at 6 o'clock in the morning. I love my job. I love my students. I don't get home some nights until 8 o'clock. Tonight, my daughter goes to bed at 7:00. The closest I got to her today was a text message or a picture message from my wife. I spend more time working with my kids at school than I do my kids at home, and there are so many staff members that have unending jobs, and we're trying our best, and we clearly need help. Let's really be serious about this in-school suspension program. I cannot believe that this board or any of us can in good conscience say that we believe forcing 25 students of six different grade levels into one room as an alternative to instruction is not viable, is not effective, it is not going to work. We are not giving them the instruction if we put them in these rooms. All I ask is for the board and for all of us to give us the support that we need, to give us the help that we need, to really provide meaningful alternatives to suspension on alternative instructional sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Celeste Shade? Celeste Shade here? Sharon Silvio? Sharon here? Sorry, sorry. Followed by Lisa Young. Lisa Young, are you here?
Good evening, all of you. I'm Sharon Silvio. I'm a teacher at school number five. I've been teaching 23 years in our district. I'm a city resident. My children all went to school in the city, and so did I. Proud of that. I'm also the chairperson of the Legislative PAC Committee of RTA, and we have interviewed the majority of you on the school board and endorsed your candidacies leading to your election. One of the issues presented to you in your interview for your response was your position on the enforcement and enhancement of the policies on violence and safety in our school and the Safe School Act. One of Mr. White's responses was that our children cannot be effectively educated in a violent environment, and that resources need to be directed to the schools that report the most violent and disruptive incidences. With that, we are grateful now at our school to have a sentry at our school this year and an ATS room. However, already, there have been many times when even this is not enough for our severely disruptive students. Commissioner Campos stated that teachers must have safe and adequate working conditions, and that teachers who are in unsafe conditions need to not feel threatened and intimidated to report violent incidents to principals and central office. Administrators must not ignore threats of students. In that regard, school board commissioners and our superintendent should not ignore the pleas of teachers for more resources or dismiss their fears of safety for our students, our staff members, or for administrators. It is the staff in the buildings who see and experience the behavior of our students every day and all day. A commissioner's occasional one-hour visit to an elementary or secondary school does not give the true picture. It simply gives a snippet or perhaps a false view of the true and total picture. Our concerns must be heard. We need actions, resources, and training to deal with our disruptive students in order to ensure an orderly classroom and school environment, to receive a quality education, and for the safety that each student and safety remembers or deserves. Our concerns need to be heard and to be able to speak without the threat of insubordination, reprisal, or removal. To all of you, we implore that you keep to your convictions and the promises that you made during your election, and not to waver.
Thank you.
The future depends on you.
Thank you, Ms. Silvio. Lisa Young? Is Lisa Young here? Lisa Young, are you here? Lisa Young? Lucetta Circu? Or Circu? Forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Circu. Followed by Valerie Huff.
Well, I'm looking at you here this evening. I hope that your attention is not waning too much, that you've been sitting here several hours. I'm a home, my name is Lucetta Circu, and I'm a home hospital teacher. I've been in the program for over 15 years, and I hear about students that cannot be suspended to home. Well, that's what we did in the past, but this year it's been changed. We could be utilized. We have taught children at home, one-on-one, for one hour or two hours. But it's strange, I do have a student who has been suspended to home. It's a young boy, a sixth grader, and he is doing very well. He has been suspended for about a month. He's doing very well. He looks forward to my coming every day. And it's a wonderful situation because I can communicate with a parent. He's not with his peers where he would be getting into trouble. He is learning, and he's making out very well. So I would just like to throw out this that you would consider utilizing the home hospital teachers. We're a very variable asset, and we've done it in the past. We've had success. We've had students who have been in home instruction and have graduated, many of them. And so I think this is something that you might like to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Huff, are you here? Valerie Huff? Jennifer Case? Is Jack Hurley here? Okay. Jennifer Case, and then after Jennifer, Jack Hurley.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Case. I am a graduate of East High, was formerly a tenured teacher there, and I'm a city resident and parent of two young children. I spent the first year of my teaching career as the in-school suspension teacher at East, and I learned three important things from my students during that time. One, our program produced the best results when there were four to six students in the room rather than the maximum 12. Two, the counseling we provided helped them to choose more appropriate behaviors on return to the classroom. And three, the students remained orderly in our room because they did not want to face the consequence that awaited them if they didn't, namely, out-of-school suspension. This last piece surprised me since I had bought into the idea that an out-of-school suspension is just giving the students exactly what they want, a day off. But this is not what they want at all. What students want is to be with their peers. Whether they are top students or chronic offenders, what is magnificently important to our children is their friends, their social circle. They do not, in reality, want to be cut off from the companionship over their classmates. Out-of-school suspension accomplishes this in a very real way. I am disturbed to hear that this option has been taken off the table. I've seen ISS work, but the current policy does not work. The current policy provides a sanctioned meeting place in the school for misbehaving students. What kind of learning can effectively take place in this environment? What consequence keeps the students in order in the in-school suspension rooms? What mechanism allows for reasonably small class sizes that enable the ISS teacher to deliver meaningful instruction to students who come from different grade levels and different teachers? Finally, what consequence exists in the everyday classroom to deter disruptive behavior there? A trip to the ISS room? For some students, this is little more than a day off from classes with the comfort of a place to congregate with their friends. This is truly giving them what they want, to the detriment of all the others around them who want nothing more than a safe, supportive environment in which to learn. I would like to close by saying that I was once part of the district's Choose Rochester City Schools publicity campaign to champion our schools. I appeared on a billboard to say that I did choose Rochester schools. I would like to be able to say that when it comes time for me to make that choice for my two daughters, that I will make that choice again, but given the alarming policies being implemented right now, I cannot say with confidence that I will.
Thank you.
Make that choice again.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jack Hurley?
Good evening. My name is Jack Hurley. I teach law at John Marshall High School. The issue here is respect, or should I say, lack of respect. I've long been troubled that the district has shown a lack of respect for our students and their families. And perhaps the most disrespected are the parents of the children who send their children to school to learn, whose children want to learn. Now, this is not about suspending students. It's about educating students. And I don't want students suspended to run the streets, but there has to be some appropriate educational setting with the appropriate therapy that many of our students need for students in order to keep them in school and continue their education. Too often in the past, and currently into the present, the school district has done what looks good rather than is good. And I think that's one of the reasons we are where we are now. But I hope the board and the superintendent, I hope we don't make those decisions just to look good. We make decisions which really are good and good for our children and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Byrd? Janet Byrd, followed by Joanne Bell.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as an in-school suspension teacher in an elementary school. I work at number 50 school. And I will admit, I was guilty at first of thinking this was a high school problem, and I almost didn't come tonight. I am glad I am here to support my colleagues and to also say that the root of some of these problems are in the elementary school. Coming directly from the classroom, and I also just want to deviate for a moment to say that I am a white teacher in an urban district, and I made that choice for myself. I've had other opportunities, as I will continue to, but I feel very strongly that I do have a place in the city school district, and I can embrace all the children, whether they're white, African-American. We have a large Essel community, and I can embrace each and every one of those like I would my own child, but I can also discipline them the same way. I work in that in-school suspension room, and I see what these children bring to school with them. Many of my students that I work with on a daily basis come with the problems from home and from the bus. Superintendent Bresard, I know one of the first things you did as superintendent was ride the bus to school. I encourage all of you to get on those buses. We need to do something different. Over 80% of my children are coming from bus problems. They're coming with blood from their faces where they've been scratched. I don't know why these parents are not calling the police and filing assault charges, because if they were my children, I would be. I absolutely feel that we need to get to the root of the problems, and we can be successful in educating these children. There is no failure if we don't let there be. So I would be happy to have any one of you come and visit me, see the children I work with, and also visit our schools and talk to the teachers that are committed to these students. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Bell? Is Joanne Bell here? Richard Wolfe? Richard Wolfe here? Kathleen Christie? Richard Hendricks? My old chemistry teacher. Linda Mackinoff? Linda here? Okay. And Ms. Mackinoff will be followed by Brian Bizagati.
Hello, I'm Linda Mackinoff. I'm a teacher at Monroe High School. I'm number 90, so there's not an awful lot to say. I've taught for over 20 years. We've got a great
Hello, I'm Linda Mackinoff, I'm a teacher at Monroe High School. I'm number ninety, so there's not an awful lot to say. I've taught for over twenty years, and we've got a great team at Monroe, we really worked well together. And we've really worked to get disciplined and safe together in the school, and we started off really well. We worked during the summer, getting together, talking together, you know, really brainstorming, getting things that really worked for these kids, a lot of positive reinforcements, and it's disintegrated. It's disintegrated because the kids, there's no really bottom line. They found out, and they've learned this year, they can leave the ISS room and wander around the hallway from, they can curse out a teacher, they can kick doors, they can kick class, they can come into classrooms, they can assault teachers, they can curse out teachers, they can be incredibly degrading to teachers and get away with it, because there's really not a lot they can do. If they don't like the ISS room, they can leave, they can leave through the window in the ISS room. That happens, they can wander around the building all day long. And that's really the lesson they've learned, and it's hurting the environment of the school. It's hard to be in a classroom and teach when kids are running around the school cursing, yelling, screaming throughout the hallway. It's a distraction, and it's hard for a kid to learn. And we've got mostly really good kids, they really want a good education, and it's hard for them to get that. That's really all there is to say, and you've heard it, and it's just, we've really started off so well, and I feel like we're ideal, you know, school there, and we've got administration is supportive, but there's only so much they can do, because frankly, their hands really seem to be tied in supporting us.
Thank you. Brian Bizagati, are you here? Brian Bizagati? Maria Lopez? Ms. Lopez here? Daniel Sullivan? Thank you, come on forward. And Mr. Sullivan will be followed by Kirsten Palmer, is Ms. Palmer here?
Hello, board members.
Good evening.
Concerned citizens? Thank you for providing this forum for communication. My name is Daniel Sullivan, a proud teacher at East High. I've been there for eight years, it's my lucky number. I'm here to express my concern about safety, welfare, and the rights of our students, and ask you to make policy changes to address this. That is why I'm here. I am here because of the students, and that is why I go to East every day. And I believe we are all here primarily for the students. A friend of mine, Mike, I won't tell you his last name, he's an old soldier, told me once, "There are two things you need to know: where you are on the field, and in what direction are you going in." So where are we? You've heard a lot tonight where we are. I hear violence, fear, intimidation. This I see as ineffective discipline policies that, in effect, reinforce these dangerous behaviors we see. It is reinforced. Yet, our goal is to provide a wholesome education for all of our students. That is why I am there as a teacher, and I believe that's why this board is created. "So where are we going?" my friend Mike would ask. In the wrong direction, I would have to say. A student cannot have a good education when they are not safe, or when they perceive they are not safe. It will not work. And I believe we are failing not just the ones who don't feel safe and are fearful, but the ones who are violent. We are failing them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Kirsten Palmer here? Arkey Allen, are you still here? Arkey? I don't think I saw him. Ann Lewis? And Ms. Lewis will be followed by Amy Reneer?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be brief. My name is Ann Lewis. I am a parent of two sixteen-year-old twins who attend Rochester City School District Schools. Additionally, I am a teacher at East High School. I am here tonight in, in support of the in-school suspension policy. I voice the support for personal and professional reasons. One of, one of my children has ADHD. Last year, this child attended Wilson High School. At the conclusion of the school year, I was informed by one of the school's safety officers with a smile on his face, my child had the highest rate of out-of-school suspensions at Wilson. I am sure you are thinking to yourself, "Her child must be a monster," but my child is not. The multitude of those suspensions were a result of him being late for class, being outspoken, spoken, pushing the teacher's wrong buttons, and some were for the teacher pushing his wrong buttons. One suspension was for physical horseplay with his twin sibling during their common home base. One administrator justified my son's suspension by saying, "His teachers need a rest from your child." Yes, to prevent these suspensions, my child should have done things differently, and yes, some teachers could have done some things differently also. Unfortunately, unfortunately, during these very various periods of suspension, my child lost an enormous amount of direct instructional time. Attempting to get my child's missing work was always complicated for some reason, always obstacles. Last year, I was at a professional development workshop with Superintendent Bizzard. He was the keynote speaker. Superintendent Bizzard shared his vision with the body. At that, at each juncture of his presentation, the superintendent stressed that strategies must be deployed to educate our youth. Failure was not an option.
Thank.
Prior to, prior to concluding the meeting, Mr. Bizzard shared the suspension assistance with the body.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, officer.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Reneer, followed by Stephen O'Hara, is Stephen O'Hara here? Okay, Ms. Reneer?
Good evening, my name is Amy Reneer, I'm an elementary teacher at School Forty-Four. I've been teaching for twenty years. We've been speeding through the list quite quickly. I'm sure most of the teachers that weren't able to speak tonight are home, preparing lessons, correcting papers, getting a good night's sleep so they're ready for the next day. I teach in the elementary building, there are problems in the elementary building as well. We have children dismantling plastic paper, or pencil sharpeners, digging out the razor blades to cut each other. They're cutting each other with scissors, and nothing is being done. They're not even being disciplined. It's happening in the elementary schools. We are at a, at a double standard. Raise the standard academically, but lower the standards behaviorally. We can't have both.
Thank you. Stephen O'Hara? Corina Miller? Is Corina here?
Hello, thank you. First of all, I want to say that I'm a teacher at East High School. My name is Corina Miller, I'm a special education teacher, I'm in my seventh year there. I know we've all had a, had a very long day, a very long evening, I will try to be concise. I'm not a complainer, I'm a teacher, I'm there because I want to be there. The other day, a friend said, "What can we do to get you over here to Pittsburgh?" I said, "I don't want to go to Pittsburgh, I want to be at East High School, I love these kids, I'm here because I want to be there." However, at eight oh five this morning, I was rushed by sixty kids, along with another colleague who was accompanying me as we do our administrative duty every morning to write tardy passes, the kids rushed through the scanners, were completely relentless, reckless, it was chaotic, they're, despite the fact that safety officers were there, a police officer, and people, I was told by the police officer, were from central office security to see what was going on at our school. This still took place, no one intervened, it was frightening for students, I, there was no control. I feel that the lockdown that happened today could have been prevented. Those kids never went through scanners, I don't know that it was directly related, but it could not have helped matters. What this represents is the bigger picture, the complete disregard for authority, for rules, and just decent, decent behavior. There are tons of wonderful kids at East High School, but what am I supposed to tell them when they say, "How come this goes on? How, how can they act this way? Look what's going on, miss." And they shake their heads in resource room going, "These kids are crazy, they don't want to be here, why are they here? They're not here to learn, miss." And I'm embarrassed, and I'm sorry that I don't have an answer for them. I, I just want to end on, what can you, I know you can't guarantee anything, I know we are all here because we have good intentions, but is there any chance you could say to me that tomorrow morning at East High School, our school will be safe, and that the same thing won't happen tomorrow morning?
Thank you. David? David Altabelli? Followed by Ann Penfield?
Good evening, I almost thought I'd be saying good morning. I'm David Altabelli, I've been teaching for thirty-seven years, thirty-three of which have been in this district, my district. Shame on all of us. Shame on us, we cannot make our schools safe for our students. Our schools are mirroring, mirroring the violence that exists in our community. Students deserve a safe haven while in school. Instead, our students feel as though they are in a war zone. Some of our students and their families have escaped war-torn countries, only to be traumatized by our school environments. I thought that a crime in school was the same as a crime in the streets. Zero tolerance has no meaning in our schools, it doesn't. We need a school and a program for disruptive students, and this is going to give you some solutions, I think, that addresses their needs, they need anger management counseling, they need drug and alcohol, alcohol rehabilitation, they need meaningful instruction, they need vocational assessments with work-related opportunities. If we want to break the culture of hopelessness and failure that exists for so many of our students, we need to act now. Now, there's a young lady who unfortunately did not sign up for this, she teaches in the I'm Ready program. Let's bolster up that program with some of these ideas, okay? And with more staff. Additionally, on the topic of First Amendment rights, particularly freedom of speech, I was interviewed tonight by the, the city newspaper. I hope there will be no reprisals, but I'm, I'm, I'm ready for them. Good evening.
Good evening. Ann Penfield? Is Ann Penfield here? Ann Penfield? Howard Eagle? Howard? Yep. And after Mr. Eagle will be Julie Clayton.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
With all due respect to my colleagues, for a minute I felt like I was in the, in the Twilight Zone. Teachers come to the microphone, sing and dance about social promotion, and then our colleagues, intellectuals applaud that, as if we don't have a role in it. How do you think they're moving on up? This is, this is, and all the simplistic explanations about what's happening, somebody please relay to the secretary who makes the list, that when I call and say that I'm speaking as a representative of a community organization, as a parent, don't list me as a staff member. I'm speaking as a representative of activists against racism movement, as a parent of two children in the Rochester City School District, as a twenty-three-year veteran teacher, high school teacher, local, state, and federal taxpayer. And we want to be clear, our organization does, that we're not here to bash teachers. I'm a teacher, so if I were to engage in bashing teachers, in essence, I'm bashing myself, which is unintelligent. But we have a problem with, with the protests this evening. When teachers perceive that their safety is at risk, they know how to protest. But when our children are being abused verbally, when they're being abused physically, when they're being called monkeys, and they're being called animals in classrooms, and sprayed with spray bottles, and locked in closets, we don't know how to protest. That's a problem, that's inconsistency, and it's hypocritical. Now, as it relates to the superintendent's new policy, we support it. What's appealing to us is the underlying philosophy, which is if we understand it, that we can't do business as usual, we have to stop dumping our children into the streets because we know what happens. They end up in trouble with the law, they end up in jail, in prison, dead at an early age, and we have to stop, is the message, we have to do something different. And we support that, and he seems to be saying that something different is to first, keep them in school. On the other hand, we don't support cheap, quick fix kinds of solutions. We know that if we're going to get at the underlying behavior, the underlying problems rather, and issues, that, that accounts for the behavior.
Thank you, Mr. Eagle, I'm sorry.
Some serious alternatives. And we, what we want to say to the board, and to the, to the superintendent, and to teachers, and to parents, and to the community, is that we're willing and ready to work with anyone who's serious about solving this very old issue. It predates the superintendent, it predates every one of these board members, it predates community leaders.
Thank you.
We've got to become serious about solutions. You don't have to applaud, I'm not speaking for applause.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eagle. Julie Clayton? And Ms. Clayton will be followed by Tyrell Green, and then lastly, Beverly Pringle.
Good evening, Superintendent Bizzard, President Malek, and all the board members, and my colleagues, and parents. My name is Julie Clayton, and I have been teaching with the City School District for twenty years, and am presently teaching with the Youth and Justice at the Monroe County Jail. And I too pay local, state, and federal taxes. I'm a local tax and federal taxpayer. I spoke last month concerning the, the classroom safety of ISS. And as you can see, my concern is shared by many teachers, as well as students and parents, and as you can see, things are not right. I feel that the ISS program and I'm Ready programs were set up in, in great haste without enough thoughts and details, thoughts to details of procedures. Mr. Bizzard, you had said at one point that you had expected some hiccups, but these are not small hiccups. These are really major, major problems, having to do with teacher's safety, with student's safety, with all kinds of safety in the school for students and teachers, and that's what's important. The students should be able to go to school feeling, feeling safe and secure, and teachers should be able to go to school feeling safe and secure as well. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. You and the board need to look at the situation and try to make it right. I have a few suggestions, people have all made suggestions tonight, and I'm sure you could, you can make it right. More counseling, different things that will really, really help the students. Perhaps, the students could come in later in the day, after the regular student, the most of the student population have come in, and leave a little earlier, and they won't have that contact with students. You have the suggestions for?
Thank you, Ms. Clayton.
More home hospital, reinstate the GTI, there's all kinds of things you can do.
And Ms. Clayton, if you can get those suggestions, either emailing them to the board or get them to our clerk, we would greatly appreciate it.
I will do it, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Tyrell Green? Is Mr. Green here? And lastly?
Okay, I'm sorry, I got here at five minutes and five. My name is Tisha Mitchell, and I'm the teacher from the I'm Ready program. I thought that somewhere on our list, there would be a teacher or someone from there, and I think with all the names of the people that were here, and that were not able to speak, if you could just give me?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't do that.
But you know what, every day, when you say you're sorry, this is what I deal with every day, students.
Right.
That come in and do with whatever they want to do.
You're gonna have to?
What I say to you, Mr. Bizzard, is will you please give us more support at the I'm Ready program?
Okay.
There's no scanners there.
Ma'am?
We have a scanner, there's no?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I, I, ma'am, I'm?
There's no security, we have fights every day, we have the gangs.
I'm sorry, can you?
We have the, the family members that are fighting each other.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to take your seat, please.
And I will, but what I'm saying is, help me, because I am committed to the students there. I am.
Ma'am, you can?
To the Rochester City School District.
You can talk to the superintendent, you can talk to the superintendent after the meeting, please. Dr. Pringle?
Good evening. As Abraham Lincoln would say, "It often requires more courage to dare to do right than to fear to do wrong." Ladies and gentlemen, I am the proud principal of East High School. The vast majority of our students are respectful and usually cooperate well with our adults and other qualified members of the school community. There's also a core group of teachers that are committed to working with all of our students. Some of them have been acknowledged tonight. They have high expectations and make tremendous efforts to support our students. We have numerous fantastic programs, I could go on and on about. But let me share with you. It is these groups of fantastic students and teachers that have been much affected by the discourse that culminated today with the incident that occurred earlier. And as much as the teaching staff has expressed concern about the district's discipline policies this school year, the issues that are being brought forth this evening stem from a much larger area of concerns. Accountability. Every adult is responsible for the safety and well-being of our students. This means that the administration, faculty and staff, the safety school officers, known as CENTRIES, the central office, the central school district office, parents, and students each have a role to play and must take ownership in order for the school to have a safe and orderly environment. There's a second issue, trust. Every participating body in this accountable group needs to understand and respect the value that each of us possesses and work together to ensure that such an environment exists. Ladies and gentlemen, my point is that our adults must be, or must do a better job in building relevant relationships with our students. My biggest concern since I arrived to East is that students respond as they are received. Come on now. The old adage, "They don't care how much you know, but how much you care." Holds true here. Students are also receptive to our passion. If not that, the way that we, the educators, teachers, and administrators communicate with them. Now, having said this...
Thank you, Dr. Pringle. You can just wrap up.
As long as we continue to not do right by these students, we will have business as usual. I hope that each of us recognizes that we have a responsibility and that we will do what we need to, provide the right resources so that the programs do work and are effective, to make sure that our parents are involved. I wish I could have this much interest in a parent involvement meeting. By the way, it's December 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our meeting. I want to, we really do not respond, I know it's difficult for my colleagues, but the public speaking part of this is really for board members to listen. And many of us probably want to respond to you, but our jobs really are really to listen to everything that you said, and for us to come back together as a board and process all that we've heard to see how we can move forward. I want to thank all of you for staying around late, for participating in our democracy, and really, you're right, as citizens of the United States, to be able to come to our meetings and speak. So, thank you very much. It did not fall on deaf ears. I have tons of notes from individuals that have made various comments. Please get other comments to the clerk of the board, and we'll be happy to hear those. Thank you so much for coming, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Vice President White. We are adjourned.
I know, everybody, I know, but I can't let you all slip into school. I can't have it, you would be here all night. I know.
Time is it? No idea.
I wish they was here when they'd be starting to say graduation. They don't be filming.